Call the order. The regular meeting of the Kingsburg Board of Education will be held in the Bolger Middle School Media Center. Adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to the Esbry Park Press filed with the municipal collective of Kingsburg. Posted on the district website and posted inside the office of the Kingsburg Board of Education, 100 Palmer Place, Kingsbury, New Jersey on January 11, 2025. Roll call?
Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizell?
Here.
Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Here.
Mr. Minkowski?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Ms. Ryan? Ms. Vara?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, there are several fire exits. Just looking around you, case of emergency. Everyone please stand for your friends. Elijah, please. Elijah, please.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bird, we're going to be the students first. So our student ambassadors are going to give their reports. So the first young lady, she has big shoes to fill because her sister did it last year. Let me introduce Angelina and her partner Chase from the Bolgers.
There are many exciting clubs and activities that can be issued. Our course committee team will have extended. This week they did a great job at these. Cornerly things, the leadership, the tolerance, the attitude of the faculty. Other clubs, we have a program called the Freedom Movement. Sure, council board. The eighth grade is a work of art officers and executives. We also have a cafe after school where our students get extra help with their academic subjects and programs.
Call all the boys. Bolger Middle School has been a red plant in November for any member of our community who is available. Anyone interested is asked to please reach out for more information.
October 6th was the beginning of this year's week of respect. Each day was desert doesn't mean for your students to wear a particular garment. The suggestion for Monday is to wear a t-shirt and stand up to show your problems and your concerns.
On Wednesday, October 15th, we welcomed dress speakers Lauren Hall and Molly Thompson to speak with all the girls in grades six, seven, and eight at an assembly. They were the founding members of Kind Campaign, which provides in school assemblies, educational curriculum, online resources, and volunteer programs focused on raising awareness and long-lasting effects of bullying. The girls' caucus was very informative and spoke about how excellent the assembly was and how much they learned.
Jeff Altucher is the chief of the faculty and deputy director of the school chief of the senior ally children.
On October 20th, all Bolger students put on their best time for this year's school pitches. There is a school-wide book fair. We will be held this week for students having everything in school books and they are drawing the other classes. There is an opportunity for any eighth grade student who is interested in attending an out-of-district high school next year to attend mandatory open houses for that particular school. The deadline is approaching soon. If interested, they can go to Bolger's guidance council and Ms. Kohler will give them more information. East R. D. School, St. John's Beanie, Red Bay Chapel, Trinity Hall, Christian Brothers Academy. Also, the Monmouth County Vocational Schools are masked and Learning Academy of Science and Technology on CND Hope, High Technology on the Brookdale Campus of Lincoln. Academy of Allied Health and Science in Latu, Communications and Law, Bio-Technology and Food, and Academy of Law and Public Safety in Longbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Our high school ambassadors are Alexis and Jada. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share some updates on what's been happening around Kingsburg High School this month. Starting with student council. We're hosting Titan 5K on November 15th at the high school. Registration starts at 7:30 a.m. and the race kicks off at 9:00. All schools will go with the Tunnel to Towers Foundation. If anyone would like to walk or run, registration link is posted on the district's preschool page. Our annual power game is coming up November 19th right after school. It's a $2 entry fee and schools will be split between the class of 2026 and 2027. Come out and cheer on undefeated teams.
Key Club has been very busy lately. Over the past month, members volunteered at Kingsburg Day and the Trumpet Street. Next week, we'll host our induction dinner to welcome new members as they take the Key Club pledge to serve their community. And coming up next month, we'll be running our annual blood drive on November 22nd from 9:30 to 1:30 in the high school cafeteria. You can find all the info to sign up on the school website. It's a great way to give the gift of life. The National Honor Society will be helping out at the preschool's Halloween parade and will be kicking off the Thanksgiving food drive next week. The Environmental Club partnered with the Kingsburg Garden Club for a fall planting at Friendship Park back in September. And members also took part in the issues on October 18th. The club hopes to continue working together to help unify our town.
Members of the World Concert Club volunteered at preschool's pumpkin painting event on October 21st. They helped teachers and students set up cleanup and activities. A big shout out to Ravana Thompson, Cheyenne Green, and Ashley Wealley, Keely Kenny, and Alicia Rossini for being such great role models for our U.S. Titans. And last year, the sophomore class was running a cookie dough fundraiser. So far, they sold 30 tubs, but need to reach 120 profit. The sale ends October 31st, so there's still time to split the class of 2028. You can reach out to Ms. Hooker or Ms. Davis for details.
That's all for this month. Thank you for your time and for continuing to support our students and school events.
Thank you. Okay, well now the presentation for the hit by Mr. Dr. Bird. Dr. Bird, he's my friend. Okay, so I'm going to move.
All right, good evening. So in the yearly cycle of harassment, intimidation, and bullying recording, we're at the part of the year where we're self-reporting our data. Over the summer, each school reported their SSDS data or school safety data system data. That's all incidences of harassment, intimidation, bullying, and other incidents that need to be filed with the state. Due at the end of this month is the second part of that, which is our school self-assessment. Each school principal or designated goes through and self-grades based on their assessment of how their schools did as far as different criteria for HIP implementation. So each school was asked to complete or to assess eight core elements. These elements were their HIP programs and school safety team, their trainings on policy, staff instruction and training, such as suicide prevention and HIP prevention, curriculum instruction on HIP, how it's interwoven into the curriculum, as well as the week of respect, HIP personnel, so the anti-bullying specialist, anti-bullying coordinator, myself, and the school safety team, the HIP reporting procedures for each school, their investigation procedure as far as its notification, completion, and reporting, and then lastly, HIP reporting. So this and the SSDS that I had earlier alluded to. Each school scored themselves in each of these criteria from zero to three, zero being not effective, two being meeting, so it's important, two is we're meeting where they want to be, and then three is exceeding. The overall total, 78 is the highest one could earn, 52 would be meeting in all areas. And one very important caveat, it does ask at the end of each one of these, if the school district permitted preliminary determination. That's where a principal prior to a HIP being investigated can do a short investigation and decide whether to do the total investigation. We as a district do not do that. So anybody that reports a HIP, that HIP is fully investigated each time. We do not ever use the principal's determination to go around doing the full investigation for a HIP. I'm going to quickly kind of go through these. I don't want to spell each one out, but so this is for the early learning center. And you'll see there's the eight core elements as I go through and what they self-report their score to be. All right, you'll see at the very end, their final score was a 67 out of a possible 78. Reminder again, 52 is meeting where we should be. So 67 is pushing towards that exceeding level. For Bolger. So again, 52, meeting. For Caruso. 69 total score. And then lastly, the high school. I know I'm going through these fast, these are both on the website as well, so they'll be available there. The high school's top score is 65. So again, let's review. Early learning center, 67, Bolger, 52, Caruso, 69, and the high school, 65. All pushing towards that exceeding and all above the minimum, well, the 52, that's the minimum for meeting. Is there anybody with questions?
Now, what is the self-assessment? Like, does the state come in and assess itself for one?
No, so what the state does is they take our self-assessment as well as our reported data, incidents and such, and they use that to compile a grade. That's when you'll see me again in the later half of the year, reporting out the grades. Yeah, thank you.
Why was the Bolger school so significantly lower than the other schools?
Again, it's a self-assessment, so.
They score themselves harder. So it is subjective in the fact that it's whoever's scoring it and some expect more sometimes, and so they score themselves a little bit harder.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports?
I just have one. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. The finance committee was held earlier this evening. Nothing new to report. Bills were overviewed and just hope everybody would like to take a quick moment to take a look at number five on the business administrator's report of the agenda as they approved the budget calendar. It's always very significant for the school district as we had planned for the next year ahead. And also, big kudos to the administrative team here as we are not approving not one, two, or three, but four grants for April. So definitely, definitely great those stuff.
Thank you, sir. There will be no executive session, am I correct? There's no executive session. Yes, whatever. There we go. We're now opening up the comments and questions related to the board agenda items only. Please come up, state your name. See, I'm not going to close that. Moving forward, there's no executive session. Approval of minutes, please. Make it a motion.
I'll say it.
Is that you?
Yes.
Roll call, Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Stay.
Ms. Chupa?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Vara?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
The superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Personnel, number one, professional employment. Number two, transfer of professional and non-professional staff. We just want to note on this one, on the second name, 22,396 is charged to the grant and the remainder is charged to local just based on the list of what is in the grant and will reflect that in a minute. Number three, long-term substitute teacher. Number four, leave of absence medical. Number five, leave of absence medical revision. Number six, leave of absence unpaid childcare. Number seven, leave of absence intermittent expanded sick leave. Number eight, substitute teacher and paraprofessionals. Number nine, coaching advisor positions for the winter for Joseph R. Bolger Middle School. Number 10, coaching advisor positions for the winter for Kingsburg High School. Number 11, advisor positions for Bolger account revision. Number 12, additional athletic ancillary workers for the 25, 26 school year revision. Number 13, district professional development. Number 14, Title I grant personnel salary revisions. Number 15, volunteer positions. Number 16, professional development costing $150 or above.
May I get our motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Give a second. Any questions?
No questions? Roll call. Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes, everything remember.
Number 11, next name? No. Thank you. Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes, so I recuse myself on number 14 and on number 16, 15.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes, but on number 10, third name down, I abstain. Thank you.
Ms. Vara?
Yes, but I recuse myself from number 10, second name down.
Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Number policy and regulation. Number 17, policy first reading alert 214. Number 18, regulation first reading policy alert 214. Number 19, policy and reading alert 235 and general policy updates for 235.
May I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, sir.
Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Vara?
Yes.
Country general, number 20, the district H.I.D. report. Number 21, memorandum of agreement with local law enforcement. 22, Kingsburg School District Nursing Plan. 23, New Jersey QSTAC District Performance Review. 24, curriculum title revision. 25, disposal of unusable outdated broken furniture and equipment. 26, acceptance of donation, Kingsburg High School. 27, in-class skate trips. 28, out-of-ski class trips.
May I please have a motion? Can I have a second, please?
I'll say it.
Any questions?
I have a question. We always need to have a lot of information, but we can't even really.
So.
Do that or just?
We leave it rolling every month so that we can get rid of things.
So just in case you.
Because if not, we'd have to hold on to a broken piece of furniture tomorrow.
It's okay. I was just curious because I just know it's almost like every month.
We leave it rolling every month.
I was gonna say, there's no way we have that much bad furniture.
Any other questions? I do have one, please, on number 26. As usual, can we send a beautiful 90 letter from the world K.T.? All right, sir.
Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Vara?
Yes.
School Business Administrator Board Secretary reporting. Board Secretary's monthly certification certifies that no item has been overextended in September of 2025 and that sufficient funds are available due to the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. Parallel certifications for September 15th and September 30th. Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Number one, approved bills list. Number two, approved 25, 26 district tuition. Number three, approve home instruction. Number four, approve McKenna Bento tuition, 25, 26. Number five, approval of the budget calendar for the 26, 27 budget recycle. Number six, approve the submission of the P.A.R. D.O.A. and S.E.A.P. evaluation school buildings checklist. Number seven, approve the comprehensive maintenance plan in Form 11. Number eight, approve 25, 26 district food service program pricing. Number nine, approve the acceptance of the cultivating ongoing achievement through coaching and literacy grant. Number 10, approve the acceptance of the instructional materials for professional and advanced and coherent teaching contact grant. Number 11, approve the acceptance of the literacy initiative for families and thriving communities grant. Number 12, approve acceptance of school violence prevention grant.
All right, may I please get a motion?
I'll motion.
Have a second? Any questions?
I have a question. Number three. Number four is just seems we have a different view or, you know, we have learned well from the three of them. Do they remember that or, you know, we just had to go to different company or did they have like more specific?
For, I'm sorry, which one?
For number three, the home instruction.
Oh.
See, like three of them were the same company.
So the contracts were outside the company and they placed them.
So those are for high school I students, so depending on where they are.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
Here, roll call, okay. Roll call, Mrs. Clayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Mrs. Callahan-Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Vara?
Yes.
We'll now open the meeting for public and comments. Questions related to the agenda, any concerns? Please come up, state your name. See, I'm done, we'll close that. Any old or new communications? Mrs. Clayton, I'm going to start with you this time. Mr. Cook?
I just wanted to say that it was a fantastic time for the NJ SBA Annual Conference with everybody that attended. I'm sure there was a learning experience. I also want to just remind everybody here on the board that the Monmouth County School Board meeting will be held on December 2nd. Hardly believe that we're thinking of December in October, but it's going pretty fast. So just wanted to give everybody a little reminder. School year's been going pretty well, so I understand there's always a little hiccup here and there, but I haven't heard anything. Everything's been always great, especially from the food to the security to education. Really a great job at Lee University Administration. Thank you. Again, it was a $330,000 rough Lee grant, so it really shows achievements.
Christine's been very busy, yes.
She always does. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we talked about the school year and we look at September and we look at kids and discipline. And thank you to the administrative team, our teachers, our support, security. It's working. We look year over year, we see beginning of September, we're getting back from summer, they're having a great time. And then September's a little rough, but we're seeing improvement. The numbers are down. They're down pretty darn good from the beginning and several of us discussed it, so thank you. Message is out, it shows by the numbers. One school's a little bit harder on themselves, I think, than others and stuff, but it's a tough age. It's a tough group of kids, right? Because they're coming out of an elementary school, they're getting into the puberty session and everything else, and then they're getting ready for high school. So, I mean, you all do a good job. You put your heart and soul into it every day and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Mr. Kitchen?
Want to say to student representatives, they did a great job. Dr. Bird, thank you for coming to do the presentation. Thank you everybody for being here. Hope all the kids have a happy Halloween, stay safe.
Ms. Frizell?
Mr. Minkowski?
Mr. Kitchen basically just said everything I have on my list here. So I wanted to thank student reps for coming. It's good to have them back and we missed them the first meeting. I want to thank Mr. Bird for his presentation. I still think the difference between HIP versus bad behavior gets lost sometimes if there's a very specific definition of what is harassment, intimidation, and bullying and what is kids doing, what kids sometimes do and should not be doing. So doing all that work to make sure that we're investigating those to see if they're truly HIBs. I know people often say, my kid, bullying is happening. And unfortunately, it doesn't meet the definition of that, so it's important that we keep on hearing about it. Moving forward, the Titan 5K. Don't bring it, anybody. We keep on, it's only 5K, but that's it. And just have a happy and safe Halloween.
Mrs. Clayton?
Except happy Halloween.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Nothing.
I have a couple of things. So yes, the Hoff family, the Pass Horse Middle East, we'll have the most representatives in the Titan 5K. I wrote that down. Fall sports are coming to an end, so if you haven't had a chance to get out there to see our student athletes, I strongly advise that be try and make time. It's incredible, our football team, we're holding our own. We're playing some big schools, but you know what? Hey, our field looks amazing when the other teams show up and they see how our equipment and our field looks. It's pretty cool. Father Time, I don't know, everything Mr. Johnson touches turns to gold. That Sharka treat was amazing. The kids, you see the kids, and when those kids see their teachers from school on the day off, it's kind of pretty amazing how they interact with each other. That, hey, they have an impact on my life, even when I'm not in school, they'll run up and get big hugs. We just talked about this. Next Wednesday is the end of the first market period. So sand is slipping through the hourglass for our seniors. We just got here last week in September. I also want to thank my Board of Education members for walking with me in the convention. We learned a lot, I like to think I did. One of the biggest things that when people saw our shirts, they say, Kingsburg, we do the right thing all the time. I always wonder, like, who does the wrong thing? We only know one way, but when somebody else compliments you that you guys do the right thing, it's pretty amazing. Halloween is coming up, so there are some curfews in town. I believe mischief night is 7 o'clock. I believe Halloween is 8 o'clock for the curfews. So please, we can get that out to the students. I believe the Hoffs of Rowanda will hand out full-size candy bars. So there is a blood drive. I challenge everyone, I give platelets, so if you can get platelets, please come, I'll be there. Our student ambassadors, that's all I have. Accept the motion. Roll call. We're watching the ball series.
I'll vote for that.
Okay, so, Mr. Kitchen?
I'll say it.
Second way, Mr. Cook?
All in favor?
All right. Thank you, everyone, and again, thank you for coming. Thank you, everyone, and again, thank you for coming.